Oh, yeah, six o'clock, let's call the meeting to order. Let's give a roll call, please.
Toller, Lever, Price.
Here.
Holland.
Here.
Genuine. Helwig.
Yeah.
Cheeseman.
Here.
Murrah. Miracle.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so everybody had a chance to look at the minutes, review them. See any proposed changes, any changes, John, do it?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Approval, second.
Okay, moved approval in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Okay, great. We like the minutes. Adoption of agenda, is there any changes to the agenda? Seeing no changes.
Moved approval of the agenda, second.
Moving seconded, any other discussion? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great, we have an agenda. Is there any visitors to be heard about anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing none?
If I may, I would, we do have a new staff member who joined us today. Alex Ruth is our new assistant to the city manager. He may, she may look a little familiar to us. She was an intern for us last summer and then completed her MPA studies at USD, just graduated in May, and we were happy to welcome Alex aboard today, it's her first day, so we have lots of projects for her, so welcome Alex.
You brought the hail, is that it? Welcome aboard, thank you. Okay, public hearings. That's item six, a special permit to exceed permissible sound levels for the, at the Radigan Platts, and Nick, if you would, please.
Kalen Stobner, on behalf of Dakota Day's organization, has applied for a special permit to exceed allowable noise levels by no more than 50% for the annual Dakota Day's street dance that is now open to, that is open to the community honor about Thursday, October 2nd, 2025, at the Radigan Platts, from 7:00 PM to 10:30 PM. A copy of the application map of the area and a notice of the hearing are attached. The city council will need to determine at the public hearing if the event is in a suitable location with appropriate facilities during the allowable time and if the applicant can demonstrate to the public or can demonstrate the public benefit of the event. The street closure is from 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM, and the actual dance portion of the event is from 8:00 to 10:00. The extra time on the noise permit is to allow for leeway with the setup and tear down noises. The Dakota Days organization has already paid the $25 fee, and administration recommends issuance of the special permit to exceed allowable noise levels by no more than 50% for the Dakota Days Executive Committee on Thursday, October 2nd, 2025, from 7:00 to 10:30 PM at the Radigan Platts for the D-Day's dance unless information is presented that would bring up problems.
Do you say from 3:00?
From 7:00 to 10:30.
7:00, okay, 3:00, it's my hearing. Anybody want to speak to this from the public? Seeing none, council? Yes.
Thank you, just a quick note that this is an event that has, has caused a lot of, I think, communication from constituents about the sound, including all the way over in my neighborhood, up on Plum Street and close to Cherry, and even outside of town. However, I think it was significantly better last year, and so I think this is just my sort of note to say, I hope that we continue on this trajectory of making sure that we are within those sound levels, that we're really considerate about how far the sound is traveling, and especially the base, which is now, which I know has been a problem in the past. But I would move to approve.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? Archie Cheeseman? Any other discussion? Okay, we have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We can now exceed the sound, thank you. That's all, that's it for public hearings, old business, step in the first one, we have a second reading of ordinance, 1532, to amend title 15, land usage, chapter 155 zoning regulations. Jose?
Thank you. So Mr. William Wood, owner of the land, has requested that the city rezone his property on Adam Street. Here is Adam Street, Madison, Lincoln, Prentice, Madison. The property that he owns is bounded by the red thick line. It's three parcels, that is currently zoned into the R2 district, and he would like to rezone it into the R3 district, which is a district that's adjoining directly to the north. This item was considered by the city's planning commission at their May 12th meeting after consideration. The planning commission recommended unanimously to, for the council to approve the rezone. The city council did have the first reading at the May 19th meeting. At that meeting, the council voted unanimously again to advance the ordinance to the second reading, which is tonight. There have been no changes to the ordinance since it was presented on May 19th. Administration recommends approval of the ordinance. A roll call is required, this being the second reading.
Thank you, Jose. Anybody in the audience want to speak on this topic? Seeing none, council, any comments?
Move approval.
Move approval, by Catherine? Second. Second by Julia? Okay, no further discussion, all those in favor, oh wait a minute, all those in favor don't say a word. Please. He said he'd set it up for me, there we go, thank you. Okay, where's the tally?
Daniel's going to put that up for, there we go.
Okay, we have five yeses and no obscens and zero nos. It is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Do you want to announce that, or do I read it and then we talk about?
You're going to read it now.
Okay. Old Business 7B, a second reading of ordinance 1534, to amend title 3, administration, chapter 20, and John, would you please?
Thank you. We discovered this afternoon that there might be a potential conflict with our home rule charter. Our home rule charter, section 5.04, does have language with respect to adopting the budget for the next fiscal year. So we respectfully request the city council postpone the second reading ordinance 1534 to your meeting on June 16th. That will give us time to, I guess, the city attorney help us take the state statutes versus our home rule charter versus the ordinance and work out if we can move forward on this right now. But there's an uncertainty that came up today as we're looking through this, so I want to visit with the city attorney about that.
Okay, speaking of the city attorney, Darrell, do you still have a windshield in your car?
I do. Few hail, but it was the rain, visibility was worse than the last days.
My gosh, yeah, it was nasty here for a while.
Lot of people stopped on the interstate.
Yeah, I can believe that, okay. Okay, so I would ask for a postponement, is that the best way, best word to use, until the June 16th meeting?
Need to postpone.
Second by Cheeseman, got it? Guess I should still offer an opportunity for the audience if they have anything to talk about, and I, seeing all smiles, we have none. Okay. You can vote, this doesn't require a roll call vote to postpone, so all those in favor?
To postpone.
To postpone, I'm sorry, yes.
Aye.
I confuse everybody, opposed? Okay, it is postponed, the second reading is postponed until June 16th. Thank you, John. So concludes old business. News bit, news, news, new business. Item A, request from the Dakota Days Executive Committee to close Main Street from Prospect Street to High Street and Market Street from West Main Street to the alley, one and a half blocks south of, one and a half blocks south, on Thursday, October 2nd. And that is, Mr. Prescott, please.
Thank you, I'm actually going to let our intern Maddie handle this one, just, we didn't get the memo changed in time.
So the Dakota Days Executive Committee is requesting to close Main Street from Prospect Street to High Street and Market Street from Main Street to the alley, one and a half blocks south, Thursday, October 2nd, from 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Last year, this event was held between Old Lumber Company and the Vermillion Dental Health, but that space was a little bit too big, so they're moving it back to the plots, which is where it was held two years ago. Security will be provided by the university police department, and they will hang no parking signs one hour before the event begins. And there was also a special permit requested to exceed permissible noise levels. The requested street closure time will give applicants time to vacate the street, set up a stage and equipment, and provide cleanup following the event. The actual event will be held from 8:00 to 10:00 PM, and the Dakota Days committee will take care of all the cleanup and setup. So police, fire, EMS, and street departments have been notified of the street closure and have no concerns, and the administration recommends approval of the street closure on Thursday, October 2nd, from 3:00 PM to 12:00 AM for the Dakota Day's street dance.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience, any on the subject? Seeing none, council? Comments, changes, ideas?
Move approval.
Move approval, by Mr. Cheeseman, second by Ms. Price, Ms. Price? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes, thank you very much. New business, item B, so fireworks, public display permit for Friday, July 4th, at 10:00 PM, near the, in the South Polaris parking lot for Minneer Chamber Commerce Development Company, and who's going to look like Matt?
I'm going to fill in for Matt Callahan. Fire Department's a little busy right now with some calls related to the storm. So Chief Callahan called, asked if I'd fill in for him on this. I think you said it well, Mr. Holland, this is the annual fireworks event. This is, I believe, the second year we've had at this location, perhaps third. So it's Friday, July 4th, it's, the permit before you is to allow for the public display of fireworks. Again, the location's the south edge of the Polaris parking lot. The approximate time of the event is 10:00 PM to 10:45 PM. In the memo, it does also note that should there be rain on the 4th and they need to postpone it, they're also asking that a rain date of July 5th be utilized for the fireworks if that situation does arise. Included in your packet was the appropriate insurance coverage, as well as the map showing the fallout areas. They have also visited with the neighboring properties and they are okay with the fireworks, both Polaris and the property owner to the south, with this taking place, they're in what's called a fallout zone, and they're fine with the event. We'd recommend approval of the fireworks, public works, public display permit on July 4th of the backup rain day of July 5th.
Thank you. I was there last year, there was a bit of a breeze and it did move a little bit, but I think if it had gotten stronger, they would have postponed on that. So, any comments from the public? Seeing none, council?
Is there a question?
Yes, sure.
For the public, where's the best place for them if they want to watch these? Is there a good place to, recommended place to park and watch them, or not park?
Probably, not along the highway, I think the state would frown upon that. But I think, you know, sometimes the area around Walmart, the VTC, the Vermillion Technology Center, you know, and the area south of there have provided some pretty good viewing. You know, a year from now, this will be a little bit different, as Carr Street will be completed through there, and we'll have more development to the northwest of there with the law enforcement center and some other things. So that might be another new spot this year, up there by the law enforcement center on James Street.
Thank you.
Yep.
Move approval.
Move approval by Price, second by?
Second.
Julia? Okay, no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have fireworks, thank you. Okay, HC, assignment of the airport hangar from Mr. Chuck Donnelly to Oracle Enterprises. And Jose?
Thank you. So the city has entered into a lease agreement with Mr. Chuck Donnelly back on August 6th, 2007. This was actually a lease transfer at the time from an original hangar lease agreement signed in 2001. In 2001, that original agreement was for 20-year, which ended in 2021, and then there was a second 20-year option on that, which the owner, Chuck Donnelly, Mr. Donnelly, chose to act on. So we are, this lease agreement that you guys are considering tonight is in the second and final 20-year period, and this one will be terminating in July 31st, 2041. On May 26th of this year, the city did receive the assignment of owner's interest in lease, which you guys have in the packet. In this transfer, the existing property owner, Mr. Donnelly, is requesting the lease to be transferred to Oracle Enterprises LLC. The current lease agreement with Donnelly allows for the transfer of the lease. It's stipulated in the agreement itself. However, prior to the, approved, prior to the lease being transferred, there has to be an approval from the city council. There's no cost to the city for this, for the transfer of the lease. The current lease being charged to Mr. Donnelly and to Oracle Enterprises would be $153.60. Administration recommends approval of the airport hangar lease assignment. Just for reference, this is Dakota Street, the entrance to the airport, the terminal building would be right here. The hangar that we're discussing would be the third one. So you have French, USD, and Mr. Donnelly, Oracle.
Thank you, Jose. No comments from the audience that I can see, turn it over to the council. This is a business now instead of a person, is he going to change the function of it?
No, it doesn't change the function, it's just an LLC. We have some of these that are owned, or owned by LLCs, so they can run a business out of their hangar. It just has to, there are certain qualifying businesses that they can use. But in this instance, they're not going to be running a business out of there, it's just, it's owned by an LLC.
Okay, thank you. Comments, anybody? Motion? Anybody want approval? Second?
Second.
Second? Second by Julia? I'm not pronouncing names while you're getting them all, Katie? Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. Donnelly is, thank you, Jose. Okay, resolutions to dissolve tax increment financing district number six. First, this is the first phase of, phase, phase of Bliss Point development, and John, please?
Thank you. To me, this is a very exciting day for the community. It represents a lot of different partnerships that came together to create housing in the west side of our community. Back in 2013, the city council approved the TIFF district, and that was a partnership of the city and the VCDC in terms of the infrastructure that went there. But there's a whole lot more partnerships that were part of this as well. If you look at it, the Bliss family, Gail and Paul, they worked out a great arrangement so the VCDC could acquire this land over time and allow for this housing development to take place. You have to look at our builders who took a chance on building, obviously, some spec homes and some design homes for respective people that wanted a house there. You look at the people invested who chose to buy a home there and created the demand that, well, also our three banks and two foundations. First Bank and Trust, First Dakota National Bank, Core Trust Bank, the USD Foundation, and Dakota Hospital Foundation stepped up to buy that debt. It was a private placement TIFF bond, so they bought the debt, and through the property taxes that came about, we were able to pay off that debt. Last, late last year, the property tax collection was sufficient to make the payments to the, to those five entities who purchased our debt. We needed the, excuse me, the property tax collection, a part of that from this first payment due in April of this year, to be able to pay the city back for the money that you advanced to make those early payments when we made interest-only payments on the debt, when we didn't have any income coming in to make those bondholders whole, whole for those couple of years. So the city's now been reimbursed for that, and we are returning the balance of that money later under checks. You have payments to those, to the school district, to the county, and to the water district for the unused taxes from that first collection. And so it's just been a great partnership. When we first put this together, the project plan, we had this TIFF district, TIFF district could go 20 years to 2033. We felt with the number of housing lots there that perhaps this would pay off in about 2028, with the build-out faster than what we thought. Certainly, the housing prices today, the last few years compared to what we thought they'd be in 2013, is substantially different. And so we've generated additional taxes sooner to help pay that off. So the good news is that, per the Director of Equalization, last November, it's just over $30.4 million worth of taxable value. And so that will be leaving the TIFF district, and that will go on to our general tax rolls, which is great for the city, the school district, the county, any of those entities that collect property taxes, and those of us who pay it, because our base is being expanded by $30 million. So I would strongly recommend adoption of the resolution to dissolve tax increment financing district number six.
Any comments from the audience, any questions on this topic? Okay, return to the council, and I have questions. Katie, help me, educate me, please. This is being paid off in 13 years versus the 20 that's allowed, is that correct?
Yes.
What, is there a benefit to the city as far as money is concerned? Do we do better not paying more interest or et cetera by paying off early?
Yes, so we paid down our principal faster, so then we didn't pay as much interest as we anticipated. So that saved taxpayers money.
But that interest would have gone to the people that loaned us money in the first place, right?
Sorry, what was that?
Would have gone to the banks and the foundations, yeah. So naturally, they'd prefer to see 20 years and get more money.
Yes.
The other question I have is, this created $30 million, a little, yeah, in new property? What does that mean to us in tax money? Do we get 5%, 2%?
Our tax levy is, I think it's like 5.02. I would have to get the exact, but it's 5.02.
Somewhere in that range, so.
Yeah.
And that's a substantial amount of money coming back into the city, I'm glad to hear that. I'm sorry, council, anybody else want to make any comments? Questions? Okay, do I have a motion? I don't have a motion, nobody wants to pay off our? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have paid off one TIFF, so let's create another one, right? Okay, developers agreement for Stensel Group to receive funding from tax increment financing district number 11. John, please?
Good observation, this one is at the opposite end. While you just closed one moments ago, this is one that is just beginning. Back on April 21st, you established the boundaries for tax increment financing district number 11. Just a reminder, or for the general public, this is the Stensel apartment project that is proposed to be constructed on just over an 8.4-acre parcel on the south side of Roosevelt Street, between North Norbeck Street and North Crawford Road. Part of this TIFF project does include the completion of the public infrastructure on Roosevelt Street, so Roosevelt Street will go through between North Norbeck and Crawford Road, once that's done. And then you had the project plan before you at your May 5th meeting. As part of that, in terms of what they will be doing is constructing the public infrastructure, about 230-plus multifamily residential units that meet the definition of affordable housing by the state's definition of that program. The other side of that is that you established a $6 million TIFF, so up to $6 million of property taxes generated by this project, paying the same property tax rates as others within the county with similar type property classifications. The first $6 million of that will go to help pay for the public improvements, such as Roosevelt Street and the public infrastructure, that's part of that. The agreement before this evening, you've set all that in place, is really the agreement that says, yes, the city will pass this money to Stensel Group. It establishes, again, that this is not a debt of the city, they only receive what is collected, that expires when either $6 million is reached or 20 years has passed. It's not a general obligation debt of the city, it is solely a pass-through, is basically what this agreement is saying. Again, there's the caps on it in terms of the dollar amount and the length of time with which it can last. Just as an aside, I believe we mentioned in the memo, the city does receive $15,000 from this project for the administrative costs for documentation that we have to go through and things like that. So there is a little bit of income that does come to the city as part of the administrative cost to it. With all that said, we happen to answer any questions, otherwise we do recommend approval of the agreement between the city of Vermillion and Stensel Group 2 to transfer TIFF 11 funds.
Thank you, John. Any comments from the audience on this topic? Return to the council, and I have a couple of questions, either John, whoever. One of the statements in here says the TID, which I understand stands for tax increment district, is that right?
Yes.
The meeting is specified in the recitals, I couldn't find a recital, what's a recital?
That is a legal term, what page are you on? Is that in the definitions?
AD.
It looks like that's in the definitions towards the start.
Recitals, whereas.
It says TID will have the meeting specified in the recitals.
Wait, the second whereas in the first page?
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't have it.
Just a definitional.
It's under a whereas, so it's not anything labeled titles. Okay, that's why I couldn't find it. Okay, thank you. Then the other question I have is probably to Katie. As we receive funds from a TIFF district, we then transfer them to Stensel, but we don't transfer ahead of time. We wait until we get tax or something from that, we?
Correct, this is just like our TIFF number five, where we get the tax money in, and then as soon as we get it in, I'll write a check to them.
As opposed to us paying the bills directly, they'll take care of it, okay? Is there any benefit to Stensel for them ending it early?
I don't believe they have a choice, and I should have also added my comments that the city attorney has reviewed this agreement, but, and found it acceptable. 100% of the property tax dollars that we collect, until those thresholds are met, have to go to Stensel. So, or whoever the recipient is in a particular project. So, just like in Bliss Point, we had to pay that debt off with every dollar that we received until such time as it's paid off. So it, there's more benefit. I'd say there's a benefit to us as a community, because then we have it on our general tax rolls sooner. The other side of it is, they more than likely are borrowing against the TIFF revenue stream, so they're able to close their debt sooner as well. They use it as collateral with loans that they might take out.
There is an incentive, which is good to know, as opposed to dragging it to 20 years. Okay. Council, any questions, comments? Do I have a motion, motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Cheeseman, second by Julia, got it? Any other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you, we have a new TIFF, wonderful. Okay, item 8F, considering the adoption of the 2025-2029 capital improvement plan, John?
Thank you, this is an annual process that we work through with the council, where we review the needs and make, have a discussion about the particular aspects of the respective apartments and projects that are coming up, and prioritize some of those in terms of if they need to be moved around in different years or different priorities that are there. This document, while it doesn't allocate any particular funds, it's helpful for us in terms of planning with our budget process. This document has been used for grant applications, because it shows that a project is in the works or that it's on the table to be planned, and it helps to document that. It helps our community in terms of planning, in terms of projects that might be on the horizon. You might also recall, we discussed, I think we did the enterprise and utility funds at your May 5th noon meeting, and then we went through the May 19th meeting, we did the general fund at those two respective noon meetings. Since that time, we've cleaned up some typos, we've adjusted some of the project costs to reflect some updates that we had, to take it from the draft stage to the document that's before you. Again, it doesn't allocate any specific dollars, but it is our starting point for planning the 2026 budget, as well as future years, so we'd recommend approval of the capital improvement plan for 2025 through 2029.
Thank you, John. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, council, comments, questions? Motion? Move approval? Second by Price? Thank you. Any further comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We've adopted the capital improvement plan. Okay, we take care of new business, we have bid openings, fuel quotes, Katie?
Thank you. We received five bids for this fuel quote. For item number one, New Century FS won the bid with 2.649. Item number two was New Century FS with 2.879. And item three was with New Century FS with 2.359. And then for item number four? And then for item number four, Stern Oil won the bid at $2.63.
I have a short memory, is New Century a new, new one to the, maybe before?
We've been using them for a year now.
Let's see, I don't need to have any questions, I think, from the audience about fuel quotes. Do we have a motion?
Move approval of the low bid.
Okay, second by Julia? No other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? We have fuel again. Jolly Park Improvements, is this going to be, it's going to be Jose, it's not going to be Jim?
Thank you. So, late 2024, the city acquired the land where Jolly School used to be. From the school district, the intent of the city was always to raise a school building and prepare the area for construction of single-family homes and a park. In February of this year, the city council awarded the contract for the asbestos abatement from the building. That project was completed to prepare the building for demolition. On, in March of this year, the council then awarded the contract to raise the school, which is nearing the completion of the raising. The contract being considered tonight is for the construction of the future park directly south, so just on the north side of Maple. The park will include a shelter, playground equipment, and a few other amenities. The city sent plans and specifications to 10 planthouses, six contractors and three suppliers. Out of these, the city received three bids on May 28th. All of the bids were read. However, one of the bids was invalid, since it did not include a bid bond, was not signed by the bidder, and did not use a provided bid sheet. There is a list of the bidders on the memo. The city estimated construction cost approximately $189,000. The low bid received from LT Companies out of T-South Dakota was for $189,116. Construction will not be allowed to commence prior to June 30th, and will need to be completed no later than September 30th. This will allow the project to, the existing project to be completed, and also allow the contractor being hired, hopefully tonight, to start acquiring the material. There's a lead time. Some of this stuff is just not sitting on a shelf somewhere, so he has to be able to order it. Tax, the TIF Number Eight, project plan included the construction of the park as one of the funded activities. Staff recommends that the city council award the base bid to LT Companies of T, out of T, for a total of $189,116. Just for reference, I do have some exhibits here, and Jim also has some exhibits as well. I'm just going to be talking about the boring stuff, which is where the park itself is going to be. I don't have anything without the school for obvious reasons, but this is the boundary of the park. This would be where the shelter is going to be, the playground's going to be here, and there's going to be some concrete, there's a bike path, or bike path there, some sidewalks going to the existing sidewalks, as a blow-up version of that. It's a little hard to see, but you can see the shelter's going to be here, it's going to be a 20 by 24. There's a 5 by 10 bike rack. Again, the sidewalk's going to the north, to the, to the east and to the south. And this is going to be where the playground equipment is. Jim has a picture of the playground equipment. In this area here, the play area, there's also going to be turf, AstroTurf. I don't know exactly the brand of it. But it's going to be within the play area, everything else is going to be irrigated. It's just going to be grass.
Thank you, Jose. As you may recall, over a year ago, we did have a public meeting here at the council chambers, asking the public what they wanted to see in this park space. We gave everything from dog parks to exercise equipment to numerous different things. The resounding comment that came back was a two-to-five-year-old playground set. So that's kind of what we went with. We went with a natural product, it's actually a wood product, a pine wood, it's a kind of a cutting-edge technology. We're very excited about this, we feel it's going to fit well in the neighborhood over there. Two-to-five-year-olds, rated for 20 to 25 individuals to play on, and has a 15-year warranty. So just a couple different angles of that. As Jose mentioned, fully turfed on the bottom, this is going to be our first experience. This is kind of a simple little playground, you can see kind of how it all fits in here with the turf. But the plan is, is that we will go away from wood chips. As our first park area with a solid surfacing. There's pour-in place, there's a couple different other versions of it, but the turf is kind of the new, up-and-coming surfacing for playgrounds that meets safety fall standards and other protection as far as synthetic and disease resistance and bacteria-free and different things like that. We believe it's going to be low maintenance. Some of the things that we run into in the park side of it is continually replacing wood chips, wood chips pulling out and whatnot. So this is going to be a nice-sized playground to give this a whirl on it. Also in that area will be a simple shelter. This is kind of a real basic picture of what it looked like. We did add some decorative columns on the poles here, I guess, it's a decorations, I guess I should say. But just a simple, small shelter. Under the shelter have picnic tables, benches and whatnot. Included in the playground area was a desire to have some form of a musical component. So what we went with, and these are pretty close to what we're going to get, some of the issues that we're having right now is with the suppliers, but it'll be very similar to this. Some butterflies that kind of, you use the different materials to, yes, hit the butterfly with, and it makes different tones and sounds. A caterpillar is another one, it's kind of more of a percussion-type instrument. This one, we might be challenged to get, because it's very popular right now. Some of the other things that we're looking at is kind of a bongo-type set in those areas. Xylophone, and Jose and I spent some time listening to them today while we're doing these, quite entertaining. I don't believe it's going to be loud for that area, that would interrupt anybody. Just some simple features, amenities at the park, including a bike rack is what Jose said. So just some things that we're looking over there. We're happy with the bid came in, we're excited for the shelter, we're excited for this age playground, we're excited in the location for this. Again, it is a pocket park, it will not have a restroom. The rest of the area that Jose did show you, there's a green space. Of that green space, we're hoping that we can get a bid for irrigation, to have a fully irrigated green space in there. It's a small park, so we hope that's going to come in at that price tag. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
All those question first, I'll put the, first of all, the audience, anybody ask me a question in the audience? Okay, is that turf, is that reclaimed tires?
No. Most of the stuff, what you're thinking is the infill, this is an infill-free turf. So they don't put in the pellets.
Okay, is it sort of like carpeting then?
Kind of, but thick and padded underneath.
I personally hope to get the caterpillar, I've seen similar to that, and that's quite attractive, and kids really like it. Yeah, comments, anybody else? Yes?
And this might actually be a question, this might be the school, school district's decision, but with the school having been there before, there was, the school bus picked up and took kids from there. Do we know if they're still going to do school bus pickup at that space? And if so, is this compatible with that, if kids are going to be waiting? Do we know?
It was discussed a little bit last year, but with the demolition going on, they didn't use that site for the pickup. But I think there was some interest in continuing to use the south side there for our school bus drop-off pickup point. If nothing else in the morning, the shelter's not too far away, if it's raining, it might give them some covered shelter. But ultimately, the school district and their contractor will make the call on the routes.
So I drove by the place at lunchtime, but since it's rained, so it might change dramatically, I don't know. But there's a tremendous amount of cement there, they're actually going to be ready by June 30th? That's, that's, that's a huge amount of cement that's still left.
They, they actually should be, they're, right now, they're actually removing the parking lots. The majority of the school has already been demolished, as far as the concrete, even the foundations, so.
Right, right where we're putting the park, there's still a very thick piece of...
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they can rip all of that out within a day.
Wow, that's impressive, okay, thank you. Any other comments? Do I have a motion? First and second, any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye, opposed, same sign? We have a park in a matter of weeks, right? Okay, I have invoices payable, where did you go?
Yeah, dividing that page.
Oh, there you are, thank you. City manager's report, please, John.
Thank you, just a couple of meetings or events before your next city council meeting on June 16th. The Human Relations Commission meets this Thursday at 5:30 PM, and that's in the Memora Conference Room here on the second floor of City Hall. The city's Historic Preservation Commission meets on Wednesday, June 11th, at 9 AM in the Powell Conference Room here at City Hall. The next three items are all related to border commission openings. We did have a member of the Human Relations Commission, they resigned as they're relocating. There are about, there are two years left on that particular term. Expression of interest forms will be accepted through this Thursday, June 5th. Anticipate that the city council will consider appointment at the June 16th meeting. Our Vermillion Housing Authority, they also have one of their five-year terms expiring, there's one that expires each June. Again, expression of interest forms for a five-year term will be accepted through this Thursday, June 5th, and anticipate that an appointment, again, will be on your agenda for the June 16th meeting. And then, the way our planning commission is set up, we have five terms that are expiring in the Planning and Zoning Commission this July. Those terms are for five years. So expression of interest forms for a five-year term for the Planning and Zoning Commission will be accepted through Thursday, June 26th of this year. And then we anticipate that appointments will be part of your July 7th city council agenda. So, that's all that happened there.
Thank you, John. Any questions to the city council? Seeing none? Invoices payable? Anybody? Any comments on invoices payable? Everybody's happy with all the checks?
Move repair bills. Second.
I'll ask the city attorney. Mr. Holland is a member of the Shakespeare Festival, he asked, should he abstain from that payment?
I'm just the treasurer, I mean, nothing important.
It's number 112.
You still have five votes to...
Read.
Yes, you do.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I was going to say, because you need five regardless.
Thank you. Then I will abstain from that vote, please. It's item 112, thank you, John.
Are we going to two, two votes, or are you just abstaining from voting?
I will move approval of item 112.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Boy, I barely made it, thank you.
Move approval of the balance of the bills. Second.
First and second, any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Repair bills again, thank you very much. There is no consensus agenda. Gosh, I hate to leave, but... Pardon? Sir, you came in late, did you have something you wanted to comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought the meeting started at seven, I looked online, it said seven o'clock.
Oh, it's still? Thank you for pointing that out. Where did you see that, sir, the seven o'clock?
Online, and so I thought it was seven.
Okay.
I'm hoping I can still be heard.
Does anybody object? You need to be unanimous, we're okay. Please come forward and state what you want, sir. Is this something that's on the agenda, or is it your?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, and I apologize, like I said, online it said seven o'clock.
I understand.
So my name's Don Eikoff, I'm with Elverado Properties. And some of you folks, if not all of you are familiar with me, this is my third year in a row, appearing for council. And I believe, excuse me, I believe last spring I met with Mayor Cole and Mr. Prescott in your office about the, we own the property on 113 through 121 East Main Street, where the hazardous sidewalk condition is. And I know there was five little poles put there initially as a temporary fix. And now four of those five poles are broken, twisted, they've hung caution, steep slope signs on them. And if you look at them, they're twisted, you can't even see the signs, they're facing the side. One of the caution signs is actually broken, hanging down. I just don't get it, Your Honor, the, my insurance company, obviously, they can't do anything, it's public sidewalk, but they keep questioning me if I'm, you know, trying to pester the city to do something. They said, yes, three years. And so they suggested I call South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance, who is your insurance company, which I've done. And the lady I talked to looked at it, it was her mayor with it, but she said that was not their department. She turned it over to the loss control department. And I haven't heard anything since on that. So that was just probably a few weeks ago. So I guess I'm just here to keep complaining, and I don't understand why the city won't address it. It was caused by the downtown, I understand, I was a contractor for 50 years, and that's what I done for a living, so I understand this was done for ADA compliance. I understand all the ADA rules. You can, you can go all the way down to three feet at 2%, and then you can slope. But if you go clear to three feet, then you have to have a wheelchair turn around at, like, within 100 feet. But you can go to four feet unlimited. So for that to be treated as a one-size-fits-all, and just pour 10-foot at 10%, and drop a three-to-one slope, and then there's a trip lip where the slope needs sidewalk, it's... I don't want to sound like a broken record, but eventually, someone's going to get hurt there. And fortunately, it hasn't happened yet. And when it does, hopefully it'll just be a broken arm or a knee or something, and not a serious head injury like a skull thing. That's why I lost my father fall hemorrhage. So I'm concerned about the public, and I feel like the city should be too. And I don't know how many of you know about the tax situation, but our taxes over the next 10 years, accurately compound them over the next 10 years, about a $30,000 increase in property taxes for us alone for these improvements. And I don't believe this should be left in front of our building like this, let alone the hazard, which nothing we can do about, that's public. And I noticed, like, you wouldn't let that happen in front of City Hall. I noticed you got a nice, gentle 10, 12-foot slope coming into your entry, into your building. You don't have a...
We don't have that, but it didn't drain well this last rain either. Well, first of all, sir, the fact you've been here for three, we appreciate that, and please continue that. I mean, hopefully we can resolve it some way, but bringing it in front of us is a grateful thing, so thank you for that.
Yeah, well, you know, I know the very first meeting, I don't believe you were mayor. The first mayor told me that they were going to address it and get back to me. I haven't heard anything. And so I just feel like we continue to get put off. There's just people around town, all around town shake their head and go, they just laugh about it.
So I believe, if I understood what you said correctly, the first time, something was done, but the signs have...
Oh, well, when I first complained about it, when the job was first done, these little four-foot bollards were put in, eight-foot on center, there's five of them, four of them are broken right now. You can take them up there and lift them, wobble them around, they're turned sideways, the handles are supposed to be like this. And there's caution sign, they hung on, caution, steep slope. But if you go, look, I just came from there, I was, I've been in town for an hour looking around, and that's why I say I'm sorry, I could have been over here, but, yeah, the bollards, they're turned, you can't even read the signs from when you woke up, they're facing...
Jose, do you know the area he's talking about?
Yeah, I know the bollards, I mean...
Okay, okay.
Which businesses are we referring to?
Well, there's, the Varsity Pub is the worst. That's the worst area, the steepest, then, then the 115, that's 113. 115 is the gym, kind of a...
Pretty much inside the barber shop, isn't it?
Well, and then the barber shop's the third address. And then 119 and 121 are, they're not an issue. It's kind of starts at the barber shop door, and by the time you get to the pub, the pub is the worst, it's really bad. Car bumpers, lower cars, like pickups and stuff, not a problem, or taller cars. Small cars actually scrape their bumpers on that curb, I'm surprised you haven't had any complaints about that. Not on the curb, but the ramp. And then when they installed that ramp, even if it were legit, which is not, they vertical broomed it. And you don't, you don't vertical broom steep concrete, you cross-broom it, it's all about traction. It just, there's just nothing done right about it. Like I said, it was a one-size-fits-all through the whole thing, and that, in that area, there's just too much fall from the roll curb to the building. So to me, they should have went, and I sent a little hand sketch drawing of how I thought it'd be easy, if I was still in business and contractor here, I could take a four-man crew and fix this. if I was still in business and contractor here, I could take a four-man crew and fix this in three days. One day, saw cut and removal, one day for grade and inspection, and a day of repair.
Sir, you surpassed the time allotted, but you've covered it pretty well, I appreciate that.
Sorry, I appreciate you hearing me.
I don't know what to promise you, we'll, but we'll look into it again, address it again.
All right, I appreciate you taking time for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you for allowing the time, counsel. Anything else? You like it here, apparently, so.
Move where you're drawn.
Okay. First and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Jose, Jose? Got a question for you.